Hey, how y'all doing? You alright? Hey, how you doing? Alright, child, let's get it started. Okay. Davenport was trying to come yesterday. Yeah, she was trying, she thought the meeting was yesterday. There you go. Is that wrong, oh, six o'clock? Good evening. Welcome to the Regular Business Meeting of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners. It is now called to order. The date is January 29th, 2025, and the time is six o'clock PM. At this time, I will do roll call for the Commissioners, District One, District Two, District Three, District Four, and Chairwoman, I am here and present. At this time, we will have our invocation that will be given by Pastor Don'ta Long of Seed Planters Community Project located in Jonesboro, Georgia, and thereafter, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Would you please stand?
Everyone will bow your heads. Gracious God, on this evening, we are so thankful to be yet among the living, and also, we are so grateful that we've made it here to this place safely. And tonight, as we continue in this meeting, I pray that your presence will continue to be in this room, and that you would allow the gift of administration to flow freely, and also that peace may abound throughout this place. That is our prayer, by the matchless name of the risen Savior we call Jesus the Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our January 29th, 2025 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments during this time?
Um, I do. I would like to pull item 11, and it's not an amendment, we're just gonna pull it at this time and add it to our, um, to another agenda. Would you like to speak on that, Attorney, Attorney Reed?
Uh, good evening. I'm Adam Chair, um, Madam Vice Chair and aboard. Item 11 is actually a Home Rule Ordinance, and it requires a certain time and advertising within a certain time period, and so, because we had to move the meeting for weather purposes from the 21st to today, there's not enough time between, well, first of all, it has to be a regular meeting, and this is not a regular meeting, and also, it's within a short period of time, less than the time that you would need to be able to do a Home Rule Amendment, so this will be on the 4th, and then again, on the 18th, and there's advertisements that will run to reflect that.
Alright. Any questions at this time, board members? Alright, at this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Oh, sec, I'm sorry, can I get a second on the motion to remove?
Second.
Alright. Uh, any discussion?
Well, yes. Is this item being removed until the next meeting?
Yes, it's actually going, it's already going to be on the meeting for the 4th. It was scheduled for that already, but now, we're adding it again to the 18th because we're taking it off this meeting, so that we can have the two read at the regular meetings and the advertisement as required by the Home Rule requirements of the Constitution.
All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes.
Uh, yes, I'd like to have item 13, Resolution 2025-18, just move to the regular agenda.
I'm clear. Are there any other amendments?
Alright, are there any other amendments at this time? Alright, and so, Mr. Reed, we just go, we can go on to adopt the agenda from there, correct?
That's correct, Chair.
Alright, thank you. Alright, at this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Alright, can I get a second?
Second.
Alright. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have our proclamation. Clayton County honors and recognizes Mrs. Helen Odessa Dixon Davenport. This is presented by Chairwoman Dr. Alika Anderson Henry.
At this time, board members, will we, can you please move to the floor? Thank you.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors and celebrates the life of Helen Odessa Dixon Davenport, mother, retired educator, and civil rights advocate. Whereas Mrs. Helen Odessa Dixon Davenport, born on May 16th, 1926 in Jonesboro, Georgia, the beloved daughter of Henry and Clara Dixon, was called from labor, granted her angel wings, and summoned to her heavenly home to be with our Creator on December 5th, 2024. Mrs. Davenport was 98 years old. And whereas, Mrs. Helen Odessa Dixon Davenport was committed in her role as a wife to Nathaniel and mother to Carolyn Davenport, a retired teacher in Clayton County Public Schools, and Gail Davenport, a Georgia State Senator and real estate professional. A devout Christian, she had a tremendous faith in God, as witnessed by her service and genuine generosity. Helen was an active member of Andrew's- Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors and celebrates the life of Helen Odessa Dixon Davenport, mother, retired educator, and civil rights-
Clayton County Board of Commissioners, excuse me, honors and celebrates the life of Helen Dixon Davenport. Whereas, Mrs. Helen Dixon Davenport, born on May 16th, 1926 in Jonesboro, Georgia, the beloved daughter of Henry and Clara Dixon, was born, excuse me, Henry and Clara Dixon was called from labor, granted her angel wings, and summoned to her heavenly home to be with her Creator on December 5th. And whereas, Mrs. Helen Dixon Davenport was committed in her role as a devoted wife and mother to Carolyn Davenport, a retired teacher with Clayton County Public Schools, and Gail Davenport, a Georgia State Senator and real estate professional. And whereas, Mrs. Davenport was known for her compassion, diligence, sincerity, kindness, and patience, combined with a desire to help the downtrodden and left out, and have endeared her to family, friends, and members of church, community, and civic organizations, as a woman of character and conviction who is highly respected and admired. And whereas she was a 1942 Jonesboro colored high school graduate, she earned a Bachelor of Science degree in home economics from Clark College and Master of Arts degree in education, with a specialty in reading from Atlanta University. Helen's humble roots growing up on a farm in Jonesboro made her keenly aware that returning to her hometown to teach would help future generations of young people realize that a good, sound education was their key to success. Therefore, she returned to Clayton County, where she taught for 38 years at WA Fountain and Lilly East Suter Schools, first and second grades, and Title I reading. And whereas, Mrs. Davenport had a significant and impactful career marked by a rich history of involvement in various associations that focus on community improvement and social change. Her longtime memberships and achievements included founding well-known organizations and receiving numerous awards, suggest a true legacy of leadership and dedication to making a difference, all while reaching the remarkable age of 98. Mrs. Davenport- Mrs. Davenport's most notable recognition for her life's work is receiving the Lifetime Achievement Award from President Barack Obama. Now, therefore, I, Chairwoman Dr. Alika Anderson Henry, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor the life of retired educator and civil rights advocate, Helen Dixon Davenport, for her leadership, service, and dedication while always staying steadfast in the commitment to empower, uplift, and serve all people through the word and love of God. In witness thereof, I have to, hereunto, set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 29th day of January in the year 2025.
Ladies and gentlemen, we will also hear from our daughter, Ms. Catherine. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Anderson, and all the members of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners. Uh, we are honored to accept this proclamation, and we want to thank, and ladies and gentlemen, we want to thank you so much for-
Thank you. We want to thank you so much for this honor. Here with me, I have family members of Mrs. Davenport, I have, uh, these are her nieces, I have Mrs. Selma Haney with her husband, Captain Joe Haney from the Atlanta Fire Department, uh, Mrs. Lucia Cloud of Dixon Grove Community, and Mrs. Diane McKelvin, Dixon Grove Community. So we are honored, we thank you, and we are gonna try to live up to our mothers' expectations. Thank you so much. I always let my sister speak on behalf of the family, but let me just thank you, uh, Dr. Anderson and members of the Board of Commissioners. My mother loved Jonesboro and Clayton County. She was born in 1926, right here in Jonesboro, walked to school three miles every day from the Dixon Grove Community to the Jonesboro Colored School, and she graduated in 1942, and then attended Clark College and Atlanta University. And, uh, she came back to Clayton County to live and to teach, and she loved her students, taught at Fountain and at Lilly East Suter School, and she just loved this community. Uh, actually, joined Andrew Chapel Church when she was 11 years old, so she was there about 80-plus years. So, uh, we are just so thankful, and we appreciate the, uh, Clayton County recognizing her, we are just so very, very appreciative. Thank you very much, and God bless.
Thank you.
The Board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board with a total time of 30 minutes. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Alright, good evening, everyone. It is now time for public comment. The first person to come up will be Dr. Henry Anderson.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Mrs. Dr. Alika Anderson Henry.
Please state your name.
Oh, sorry, Henry Anderson, unincorporated, Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Good evening, Chairwoman, Dr. Mrs.-
Wait, 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 hold on, is the timer set, Courtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I want to make sure.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Mrs. Dr. Alika Anderson-Henry, Vice Chairwoman and District One Commissioner, Ms. Elena Reeves, District Three Commissioner, Ms. Tasha Allen, District Two Commissioner, Ms. Gail Hambrick, and District Four Commissioner, Mr. Demont Davis. First, I want to thank our Chairwoman, Mrs. Dr. Alika Anderson Henry, Clayton County Board of Commissioners Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Dietrich Stampf, and Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Mr., Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Chief Landry Murkison, for having a very excellent, exceptional, informative, professional, well-planned, and well-organized great Clayton County Board of Commissioners two-day retreat on this past Friday and Saturday, January 24th, 25th, 2025. I also want to thank my District Three Commissioner, Ms. Tasha Allen, for having an excellent, exceptional, informative, engaging, and exemplary District Three Town Hall Community Meeting yesterday evening at the Flint River Community Center, where the Community Center's auditorium was filled to capacity with approximately 100 people or more in attendance, where the main topic of discussion was the pros and cons of House Bill 581. Earlier this morning, I attended the Clayton County Digital Equity Initiative Class on Navigating Microsoft's PowerPoint, held at the Virginia Burton Grade Recreation Center and led by the Department of Information Technology's Digital Equity Associate Specialist, Mr. Nigel Ling-GK, who is a son of the Department of Community Development Director, Mr. Patrick Ling-GK. Mr. Nigel Ling-GK, our class instructor, was a very excellent, intelligent, highly knowledgeable, personable, engaging, and friendly digital equity computer information technology specialist who provided excellent, exceptional, and outstanding teaching on Microsoft's PowerPoint, where he showed and demonstrated great expertise, professionalism, and patience with the class attendees, and answering all questions presented to him in great detail and in an easy-to-understand way and manner. During the public comment session at the next Clayton County Board of Commissioners Regular Business Meeting on Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, I will speak on in great comprehensive, in-depth detail my Dr. Henry Anderson's Clayton County Citizen Supreme Mega Five Evaluation Process, criteria, metrics, benchmarks, and evaluation numerical grading scale that I will be using in evaluating all on how well all of you do, or not how well all of you do, and addressing any problems, issues, or concerns that I bring before you to address and solve. I also would be discussing my newly implemented Dr. Henry Anderson's Clayton County Citizen Supreme Executive Direct Command Order Directive for immediate discussion, action, and implementation on any problems, issues, or concerns that I bring before all of you to address and solve. To all of you, continue to have a very productive, great, orderly, excellent, exceptional, and outstanding rest of your Clayton County Board of Commissioners Regular Business Meeting on this evening, Wednesday, January the 29th, 2025. Good day.
Thank you, Dr. Henry, Dr. Henry Anderson. Next will be, um, Ms. Ray.
Good evening. My name is Ray James. I too am Hampton, Georgia, unincorporated, Clayton County, and I am very pleased to be before you. Most of you know my concern is House Bill 581. And to allow me to be casual, Chairwoman, I want you to know that when I ask you about House Bill 581, I can do nothing but laugh with you saying, "Ms. Ray, I ain't gonna let you hit me up, I'm gonna hear the people," and I need that to happen. I need the people to be heard, because if the people are not heard, then we're not effectively represented. To my Commissioner, Tasha Allen, applause, 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 because- because you have given the people of District Three what we need. We need someone who's gonna talk to us and help us understand what we're looking at. We need to know the pros and the cons of what is going on, and then we need to know where you stand, and if you're not ready to let us know where you stand, that's fine, but we're happy that you've told us in front that you are standing with us because you believe this is something that's good for the taxpayers. The bottom line is whether we agree or disagree, what I want to note is that my Commissioners are given learn-it, experience, and learn-it study to the situation. I talked specifically with Commissioner Davis, Chairwoman, and he was very clear on what he understood about House Bill 581 and what he was weighing, and he has shared pros and cons effectively. Thank you, sir. I talked with Gail Hambrick, who vacillated and didn't want to talk about it and wasn't quite clear, and I'm like, I can't make you do or say anything other than where you are, but I'm disappointed in the lack of study. I talked with Elena, uh, Elena Reeves, same thing, because all of you have to vote on this. Elena, I don't know much about it, I'm gonna look into it, I'm going, I'm going into a study session now. We need you to already know, because our time is short. We need you to already know, because from where we sit, we believe that Tasha Allen is with us for opting in, and where you guys are on opting out, you can't even tell us why you think it's a bad deal.
Ms. Ray, your time is up. Thank you for your comments, we appreciate it. Thank you. Next is Ms. Priscilla Stallworth.
How you doing?
Yes, ma'am, how are you today?
I'm, I'm Priscilla Stallworth, Ellenwood, Georgia.
Yes.
My first time here, so I'm not sure, but my, my goddaughter told me this is what I'm supposed to come. Um, my problem is that I'm just being a victim of what's going on with my gas bill, uh, with these Atlanta gas charges and they base charges. Um, they just charge whatever they want to, to make it. When I first moved here, I, it was like five of us, me and my husband, my son, and two other grown people living in the house, and they based off of that. But then, my, my, my husband and cousin moved, they moved out '06, my husband died 2012, my son moved out '13, and nobody there but me. I got split level and things, so I got upstairs cut off, it's just me downstairs. I finally be thankful, they tried to tell you the Deloitte gas bill and also the price of the therm. I was thankful that Zoom, I was paying, the other one, I was paying 4.45 cents a therm, and then now I'm with Zoom, I got a good deal, well, I'm paying 37 cents a therm. But at the same time, my, my, my price ain't, my, my gas prices ain't changed, and because now, uh, Atlanta gas gonna charge me this month, $90 to send the gas to my house, my neighbor there paying $40 to send the gas to his house, and they keep telling me the base up on last year. Two years ago, I got sick, I was, when I go to hospital, I turned everything out on downstairs. I was in the hospital for a month, I coded, and when I finally came out, I went to, uh, my husband and cousin, daughter came and got me, I was gone six weeks from my house, wasn't even there. I got the same bill, okay? I'm telling you, I wasn't even there, you still had to pay it, but I had my son helping me out. My son got shot 2018. All income I got, my social security check, coming in $2,500 a month. I got to pay rent, like, gas and water. I just need somebody to call people, I had the Atlanta gas do something about these, about these charges, I saw, they, they advertising you to get your, get your gas bill down, how am I gonna get it down? I got my thermes down, but then, they come and charge me more than the base charges, and now I got paying the same bill, and I'm one person, and my neighbor got him, his wife, two kids, you know, when I first moved there, it was five of us. We doing laundry Saturday, Sunday, now I do laundry twice a month, maybe anybody but me. I have no job, can't work, I even be in the hot, my sweater on, trying to keep things down, no matter what, all they say, well, it's the same thing last year, but my circumstances have changes. I got five in the house, now I got one. My son used to always play those Xboxes and the PlayStation game, now when, when the heat at low, my light bill went down, you know what I'm saying? Because I don't play that stuff, but I didn't need somebody to help to try to get these gas charges, because they just can't charge everybody to keep different prices. That's all I, and I don't know if I'm in the right place for it, but this is what my problem is.
Well, Ms. Stallworth, um, what I'm gonna do is probably, um, DCO Murkison, can you get with her and help her as far as the gas bill, and we'll see what resources we have and who we can speak with at the Atlanta gas light for you?
Now, they did told me they gonna send this to me to try to explain to me how they do that, and I'm like, ma'am, I got a GED, I don't have no lawyer degree.
It's okay.
I don't understand how that be. All I know is I can't pay it, $90.
Alright, well, Ms. Stallworth, your time is up, but we'll get someone to take care of you.
I appreciate you.
To the right of me, thank you, thank you. Next is Orlando Gooding.
Madam Clerk, Orlando Gooding, District Three. My first question is, why are there signs on these seats that read- My first question is, why are there signs on these seats that read Board of Commissioners, Department Heads, right in front of this camera, and there's no one sitting there? Okay. My second question is, why do we have a retreat in DeKalb County to discuss the direction and the best use of funds for Clayton County? This is the second time. Wouldn't it make sense to have it where the county taxpayers can attend? Commissioner Allen, your first meeting was excellent. It was standing room only. You had, you invited Ed Walls, the CFO, Financial Advisor, Piper Sandler. He did a great job of explaining HB 581. As I understand it, if we opt out and leave it to the county, they will continue to raise our taxes to make up, to raise our taxes without limits. If we opt in, then we have to make up for the lost revenue. An unchecked government leads to waste, fraud, and abuse. We have plenty of legal fees and lawsuits and cronyism to make up the difference. Madam Chair, your bio states commitment to transparency and inclusivity. Please tell us who authorized purchasing $150,000 denali. You did not have the authority, and if it came from finance, they never brought it to this board. Okay. People who, people with things to hide never have much to say. The practice of claiming to have moral standards and beliefs to which one's own behavior does not conform is the definitionary, dictionary definition of hypocrisy. To be clear to all of you, you sit on a chair, not a throne.
Thank you, Mr. Gooding. Next is Atanya Jean Funny.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Atanya Jean Funny, unincorporated Clayton County. Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I come with two hats tonight. The first, I would like to thank the community who supported me during my run for District Three Commissioner. I greatly appreciate my almost 49% that voted for me in the runoff, and I feel that I ran my race with integrity and transparency, and I had no backroom deals. Let me repeat that for the people in the back. No backroom deals. So I want everyone to know that I will continue to be present and engaged, and I am a critical thinker and will say what I need to say when I need to say it. And with that, my second hat is as President of the Federation of Democratic Women for Clayton County, and we know that there is a need for board training. So we want to invite all future and current board members of nonprofits, government boards, to our training on Robert's Rule of Order and parliamentary procedure, and it will be Thursday, February the 6th via Zoom, so you can train from your house. I have flyers available, and also anyone can sign up at our, on our Facebook page, Clayton County Federation of Democratic Women, and you can also follow me, Facebook, Atanya Jean Funny, and I'm also can be found on Nextdoor. So I'm gonna leave some flyers here with you all, and also if there's any women out there that want to join the Federation of Democratic Women, because I believe that everyone should have an opponent when there's time to run for office. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Funny. Next is Leonard Jones.
Hello.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Leonard Jones, unincorporated Clayton County. It looks like some of the people that I used to deal with is gone, but anyway, that's another day for another dollar. I come representing the Kansas City Chiefs, and you know that we don't take no job. Exactly. I just had to say that.
Mr. Jones, don't start that fight in here with these Falcons fans.
I've been taking a lot of slack this last week, so, you know, we gotta take it all. But I just wanted to come to say something. I was riding around the county, and, you know, I just see a lot of garbage outside the road. It's like these trash companies is not picking up any trash at all, you know. I live in the second district, and what's going on up there is horrendous, you know? There's animals running around. We've been calling code enforcement. You know, the animals is just going into bags. People got garbage sitting on the ground, you know, and they screwing trash all over the neighborhood. So this company, I'm gonna call it our TNR South, they haven't picked up my trash since before the storm. And then they was, and then they was coming at, on Sunday night at 10 o'clock, they came one time, Sunday night, 10 o'clock at night, and then that was the last time that I have seen them, and I'd be running behind truck trying to catch them. Ms. Hambrick, she, you know, she know what I do. You know, I try to get things done, you know. But are you guys aware of what's going on with that? With TNR South? Are they still in business? You know, they not answering their phone, you know? I'm quite sure you guys got to be aware of that because it's everywhere, the whole county that they got, that they supposed to be serving, they're not doing their job. So I just came down after a couple, I talked to a couple of people in the neighborhood. I said, "Okay, I'm going down there because guess what, you know? Somebody ain't paying attention or something. I don't know what's going on, but they need to, somebody need to give us an explanation as to what actually is going on because they not answering the phone, and they definitely not picking up this garbage that sits beside the road all over the county." And I think it's a county issue. You guys, this should be brought to y'all's attention if y'all really don't know. I believe y'all know because code enforcement been in the neighborhood five, six times, you know, just since last week, you know, right after the storm. So can anybody elaborate on that for me?
Well, at this time, I will elaborate on that for you. What we will do is check with, to find out what's going on with that trash company, TNR South, and then we'll, Commissioner Hambrick, would you, have you talked with him in regards to TNR South?
Uh, no, not him.
Okay.
But I have constant contact with the President of Normandy Subdivision, and that has not been mentioned.
So.
Yeah, well, and I know that it is, Virginia? I don't know, you know.
Well, no, we're not talking about that.
Yeah, so at this time, what I'm going to do is I'll just refer it to Commissioner Hambrick. We will find out, and then we'll get your number, and we'll have someone to call you back.
Oh, you have his number.
Oh, you have his number? Okay.
Oh, yeah. See, I was, see, I was the day with the Association President before Ms. Hall was. So she knows me real good.
Yes.
Real good.
All right. Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
But thank you guys for hosting me.
Thank you.
She know I normally talk 20 to 30 minutes. But anyway, it's a new day, it's a new time.
Thank you.
Here to the champs, right?
All right.
All right. I'll be looking for some kind of contact.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Next, we will have Ms. Judith Cotton.
Good evening. Judith Cotton, District Four. And I was here last year in reference to what I'm gonna speak about now, the Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing Program, which is known as VASH, the VASH program. And by the way, I'm sorry. Good evening, Commissioner, and all of the Commissioners, Chair. So the VASH program, I'm here representing the veterans. I am retired Army, 22 years. I'm also on the Clayton County Veterans Advisory Board, and I also have a military sorority. And so I'm here for the veterans. We have to find a way to house these veterans. I came here last year, last summer, and I don't know, I have never gotten an update, so that's why I'm here, to find out if anyone has done anything. We have to implement something for the homeless people, and of course, I'm standing here for the veteran homeless, because we do have a HUD program, a federally funded program that will offer money for housing. As a real estate broker, I have a few clients in other counties, Fulton to be as at, and DeKalb, that does have the VASH program, but we do not have it here in Clayton County. So what are we gonna do about getting the VASH program here in Clayton County? That's what I would like to know.
We met, I see a couple of them we met with on these programs.
Commissioner Davis, can you please wait to be recognized, please, at this time? All right. Thank you. And what I'm going to do as far as the VASH program, too, I want to get your information so you can also give it to COO, our COO, so we can implement it and we'll see how we can implement it, and then we'll go from there. Ms. Commissioner Davis, thank you.
Please reach back out to me, and we'll talk again.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I'll call you tomorrow.
All right. Next is Carol Yancy.
Hello. Carol Yancy, Rex, Georgia. Section 2-136, Clayton County Code of Ordinance, General Purchasing Methods. COO and/or his designate, designee have authority to approve up to $74,999.99 and modifications, Director of Central Services, up to $50,000. Anything over requires a whole Board Commisional approval. There was a $5,000 fried chicken purchased from Publix. My question, who approved and paid for this alleged $150,000 denali and delivered December 30, 2024, and the $5,000 purchase for Madam Chair Anderson? Would this purchase be considered a ratification and malfeasance? Isn't this a clear violation of state laws and county ordinances? HB 581, Commissioner Allen, kudos to you for your very first Town Hall meeting, demonstrating a true public servant, listening to, and making sure our voices in all districts matter. 3.3 million voted in favor of opting in. That's 63% of the state. It appears this Board has decided to opt out and continue to place the financial burden without providing strategies to the citizens to prevent citizens from losing their homes, including our seniors. Why? The financial advisor that attended last night, Mr. Wall, stated ways, or started stating ways, that the businesses, retails and stuff could come back if the Development Authority Board would, if the county would allow the Development Authority Board to have or play a key role in future growth. A statement was made that four million future growth deficit if you all opt out, if you all opt in, excuse me. My question is, I come up about the same estimate of salaries and benefits for our COO, DC, COO, CFO, and other directors, all of whom do not live in Clayton County, but take their, our tax dollars to Tier Three and Four. He was interrupted, Mr. Wall, by the CFO when asked to provide pros and cons. Why is this Board, what is this Board and staff hiding? Anybody care to answer me now? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yancy. Next will be Miki Garber.
Madam Clerk, Miki Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. I want to speak about Bill 581, which seems to be a lot of confusion, and I am still in a lot of confusion, even though I went to the retreat and to your meeting, Ms. Allen, and kudos to you for holding it. Let me say this. All good ideas are not good ideas in reality. Let me put it another way. All things that are lawful are not expedient, and that is in quote, I took that from Ms. Why, the questions are that need to be answered are, why are you against Bill 581? The next question that needs to be answered are, why are some of you in favor of Bill 581? Now, through what I have learned in my mediocre mind here is that the state, even though you want lower taxes for your people and for homestead exemption, my idea is the state is making these rules, and I'm in favor of home rule. I don't want the state telling me what to do. I would rather stand here and tell you what to do. Our duty is to keep you on the straight and narrow. And at, at these meetings, and if I can't keep you on the straight and narrow at these meetings, I know how to beat you at the ballot box. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Next is Helen Whitlock.
Helen Whitlock, Jonesboro, Georgia. And I would just like to thank Commissioner Demont Davis. And in our area, speaking of trash pickup and the problems that we've had in the Valley High subdivision, Aloha Drive, Contiki, Christopher, and that area, we have been calling, because there's an area of Bambi Lane that they have tried to use as a dump, and we have had trash picked up. We have had tires that have picked up. So when our citizens have been calling, we've been having responses. So I am thankful for that, and I think it's important. That's one of the things of the community, and I'm glad the other gentleman brought that up, that litter on the side of the road. I left church on Sunday, and I was driving down Main Street, and just along the way of the Main Street and the railroad track, you know, it just really hit my heart that I wish the citizens of this county would take more pride in that area, you know, especially the Main Street of the Through Fair. And that's something I need to address and find out more, how in the county we could assist with maybe the trash pickup, not just our individual home garbage and the companies and the waste management that do that. But I am thankful that our community has seen a response, and when we do call and let them know that they, especially those tires, when I first drove through there and saw that, you know, it just, it means a lot to get a response. And there was one area that they have come and cleaned out, the drains, which we have a very gully and a dip, and we saw the, they were blowing and trying to do the leaf cleanup and pickup. So, and I do need to understand more about this House Bill 581. That's one of the reasons I came tonight, is not understanding. I think there is a lot of concern of understanding, you know, when you see the word homestead exemption and opt out, we're concerned about our homestead exemption. What does that mean? We're no longer going to be granted, because in January, I went to the courthouse, and I was upgraded from HG3T to HG4T, and I wasn't really aware of all. and I was upgraded from HG3T to HG4T, and I wasn't really aware of all the connotation that that means, you know, when I went to sign up for our homestead exemptions and the school tax. And being over 65, I think that is very important for the county and for all of us who look at our property taxes each year and want to understand the value of our homes. What does this mean for us? Just the bottom line, you know, are we going to keep our homestead exemption? And the property taxes are not going to increase by huge amounts. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Whitlock.
Madam Chair, that was the last.
Okay. All right. Again, thank you to all, to everyone tonight who spoke on public comment. This now ends our public comment.
Are there any more speakers?
You have time for one more?
Are there any more signed up?
Yes.
If you have not spoke during this meeting, you will be the first to speak at the next meeting on February 4th.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, next the board will consider the consent agenda.
Board members, at this time, I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
To approve.
Approve, I'm sorry. To approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor say, oh, any discussion? Are there any, is there any discussion?
I had a question for Chuck. I just wanted to make sure. For the motion to approve the consent agenda, do we need to add that Item 11 was tabled and Item 13 was pulled off, or have we done that?
So, the clerk has already noted, when you adopted the agenda, that Item 11 is not part of the consent agenda. And then, following the approval of the consent agenda, then I would expect that Item 13 will be the first.
Item 13 will be on the regular agenda, and we will deal with it then. Thank you. All right. Any discuss, other discussion at this time? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? And the ayes have it, and the motion passes. All right, we will now move on to the regular agenda.
Next, we have our Item 13, Resolution 2025-18 presented by our Chief Staff Attorney, Charles Reed.
Resolution 2025-18 is a resolution authorizing the Clayton County Tax Commissioner to waive certain penalties and interest assessed for taxes due, to authorize the Chairwoman or her designee to execute any documents and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expenses may be required to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
All right. At this time, I need a motion to approve.
Or it could just be a motion.
I just need a motion for, for Item 13.
Yeah, I move that we adopt Item 13.
All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion at this time, board members?
Yes.
Ms. Davis.
Just want to know and get clarification, what are some of the regulations and stipulations going into this, as far as forgiveness of penalties? And homeowners, homeowner types, or where this is going?
You said regulations or stipulations?
Correct, both.
This code is in effect basically to authorize the Tax Commissioner as that elected official who handles the collecting of taxes, to use discretion. Everybody's case is different, so it's a case-by-case basis. And unless it's just gross negligence, why somebody, you know, didn't pay, it just leaves the Tax Commissioner the discretion to decide whether or not you can allow for that forgiveness.
Right. And right now, have we, have you been allowed, I guess, the latitude and freedom to begin to help grant leniency to some of these folks?
Oh, yeah. Tax comm, historically, yes, throughout this state. Yeah, it's never so stringent. We're, I said it yesterday at Commissioner Allen's meeting, just to reassure the public, that's what we're here for, to help our residents.
That's pretty much what I want to do, is to make the citizens aware that we are not just trying to say, black and white, this is what's happened, and there we're going.
It's a case-by-case basis, and we, we listen to the needs of residents when they express that they have a hardship.
Hardships. Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Reed, you have a question?
Oh, Tax Commissioner, I was, I was curious of what prompted this, this change to allow the discretion for the late payments and penalties and interest.
So it's no change. It's standard. It's a new term. So every four years, this is going to come back before the board. It's not a change. It's standard required from the state of Georgia. Okay? Thank you.
Commissioner Allen, you have any questions? Commissioner Hamburg, any questions? All right. Thank you. All right, we'll now call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Item 14 on our regular agenda, board members, we will hold off on this item to our next meeting, our February 4th meeting. We are still waiting on the mayor to make a determination of who, who she will be appointing. Item 15, board member, excuse me, board appointment, BZA. Gloria McCain's, Gloria McCain's show on the Board of the Zoning Appeals expired on December 31st, 2024. The new term is for three years, beginning immediately and expiring on December 31st, 2027. Commissioner Hamburg, what is your pleasure at this time?
I would like to reappoint Gloria McCain for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All right. Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you. Next is Item 16, Board Appointment to Elections and Registration. Darlene Johnson resigned from the Elections and Registration Board. Pat Pilar filled the existing term that expired on December 31st, 2024. The new term is for four years, beginning immediately and expiring on December 31st, 2028. That is the appointment of the Chair. And ladies and gentlemen, I move that we appoint Arvis Walker to the Elections and Registration Board.
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Any extensions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you. Next is Item 17, Board Appointment to Parks and Recreation Advisory. Anna Burke's term on the Clayton County Advisory Board for Parks and Recreation expired on December 31st of 2024. The new term is for four years, expiring on December 31st, 2028. And that is, that is the Chair's appointment at this time. So at this time, boards, excuse me, at this time, board members, I move that we appoint Atanya Jean Funny to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you.
Madam Chair, next we have our zoning hearings. Citizens may speak for and against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision, and each side will have 10 minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within a 10-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to cease speaking and leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted. Our first item is Item Number 18, BOC 2408-0443, which is a future land use map amendment request.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening. So the first case that we have, we have it on the screen here. Item 18, again, for the record, that's BOC 2408-0443. This is a future land use map amendment, as previously stated. This is also companion with Item Number 19 as well. The request is by Battle Law PC, who is requesting to amend our current future land use map designation for the property located at 6857 Mount Zion Boulevard in Marrow, Georgia, and the request is to change it from general bis, excuse me, general commercial to a high-density residential for apartment complex development. And again, just stating that the rezoning petition will follow after. This petition, staff's recommendation was based on the analysis stating that the comprehensive plan preserves and acknowledges that this property to remain as general commercial as a guide. Staff would support to keep the land use designation as general commercial for this property. The recommendation for the future land use map amendment is denial from staff. The planning Zone Advisory Group recommended denial of this request as well. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have for our department or for staff at this moment.
Are there any questions at this time, board members? You have any, okay. All right, is the applicant present? Will you please come to the podium? Ms. Battle, how much time will you need for rebuttal? Do we, do we need to reserve?
I think I'm just going to use my time. And when it's up, it's just up. I won't come back afterwards. I will spare you all. Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562 Haversham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, 30084. Welcome to everyone on the board as we start this new year. Look forward to continuing working with Clayton County. We are looking today at 6857 Mount Zion Boulevard. I'm going to try and make my way through the presentation once, and then respond to any questions. This property is located off of Mount Zion Boulevard. We're in the area that I would call kind of the auto-centric area of Mount Zion Boulevard, where we've got a number of automobile-related uses. We've got Honda South, we've got Landmark Dodge, Allen Vigil Ford. We do have Skate Zone, the QT is there. There are some other auto repair-related facilities that are along this corridor. And then we have the property that is shown on the site plan where the proposed multi-family project is superimposed. This property is shown here, currently has a land use designation for general business. There are properties adjacent to it that have the RM zoning designation. You can also see that there's other RM zoning designations within this area. So this is not a zoning classification that would be in any way spot zoning, because it's already prevalent to have RM zonings in this particular corridor. I think what's important here is that we are also seeking the land use change to high-density residential, and as you can see, there is already high-density residential also within this corridor. When we go back, I want to highlight a couple of things, that the property owner, Marrow Investments, not only owns the property that we are looking at specifically today, but where the Xs are, are two other properties that they own that have frontage on Mount Zion Boulevard. So within this corridor, there are still parcels that have yet to be developed for commercial development along this corridor. But this piece of property poses some very interesting challenges.
Please, wait a minute, Ms. Battle, please cut down any cell phones. Keep going, keep going.
Yes, ma'am. This parcel is a larger tract that we are seeking to subdivide into 25 acres, with the remaining second tract of 6.908 acres remaining commercial. There is wetlands that are located on this property that bifurcates the property, so the back end of the property actually is not developable. And there is a considerable amount of topography on the site that makes this a very challenging site to develop for any type of commercial developer. And so what we are proposing is a multi-family project on this property. We actually originally started with it being a senior community. We were asked to change it to a family community, which we did. That dropped our total number of units from 294 units to 192 units that are being proposed on this site. At a density of 7.7 units per acre, which is not really high-density, we're right kind of in the middle of that. Kittle Properties is the proposed developer. These are kind of some elevations that we have looked at for gazebos and other things, for the amenity areas. And what probably most importantly is, we're asked a question, why change this? And I put this up here, the deed up here, to show that Marrow Land Investments has owned this property since June of 2016, so almost 10 years they've owned this property. And for 10 years, they have been seeking for the development of this site. And I'm going to read this letter quickly. I've passed that out to you all, but I want to make sure it goes into the record. In a letter that was written to the broker that works with my client, Kittle, they indicated, "We welcome your client's interest in the 25 acres located at Mount Zion Boulevard. We have been engaging with several national and regional multi-family developers for developing the property. We have decided to work with your client, Kittle." And I'm going to keep moving through. "In the past several years, numerous buyers have wanted to develop the site approach use for a variety of uses. We shared all the facts known to us with every buyer-broker approaching us, including survey, floodplain, etc. A lot of them walked the property to see the layout, floodplain, wetlands, and surface rock. And I just want to mention a few of those uses and why the buyers opted out. Shopping center developers, many retail developers were interested in the site because there are no grocery, anchor shopping centers for the nearby population. Once they see the topography of the land, the floodplain, and the boulders, they disappear quickly. Developing this site for retail is absolutely cost-prohibitive. It can be done, but we don't have $2 million to bring the dirt and level it up. No developer is interested in it as well. Truck parking facility, given its proximity to I-75, the site would have been ideal for industrial use. We had several serious major developers approach us for industrial and truck parking. One industrial user was willing to invest in approximately $200 million facility, employing hundreds, but the topo and floodplain just doesn't work. The truck parking also requires a relatively flat land. The county zoning office also expressed hesitation for any type of industrial use in the area. Other uses, I never received any inquiry from any office developers, because it is definitely not an office market. There were few self-storage developers. However, the county is clear they don't want any self-storage. So we are literally locked out of several potential uses for a site of this size and location. The only other conceivable use is apartments. Several apartment developers are interested, provided they are given the opportunity to build a project where they can make money. As you know, developers are not nonprofit groups unless they can expect to make a few dollars. No one is interested in investing $30 to $50 million." I leave the rest for you to all to read, but the main point here is that the Georgia Supreme Court has noted, when looking at zoning cases on appeal, that one of the questions is whether or not there is any reasonable use for the property is currently zoned. And we argue that there is no reasonable use, because the land development costs for any type of commercial development along this property would be cost-prohibitive. There are other tracts that would allow for commercial development. We believe that this multi-family project would bring new home, not home buyers, but new individuals into the community that would contribute to any type of additional commercial projects that could go along this corridor. We feel it's an opportunity to begin bringing in something other than these auto-centric type uses that are along this corridor. We have explained that because the project that we are proposing would be for affordable housing, that this would be economically possible because of the structure of affordable housing transactions, in which a certain amount of money is actually given to the developer through tax credits that would allow them to use those funds to level out the site and to be able to address all of the infrastructure issues that make this property impossible for development for commercial. I get and understand that this county wants to have more quality commercial development, that you see this as a commercial development corridor, but there has to be additional people coming into this corridor to support the types of residential, of commercial development that you want. Otherwise, you're just going to continue to see on these parcels that are currently zoned GB with no conditions, other more auto-centric type uses. Do you want to see ultimately, you know, another automobile repair facility along here? I don't think that's the kind of commercial that you're really looking for. But having something like this could bring and support having more quality commercial development along the corridor. I know that the staff and both the zag have indicated that they are not in support of the application. We get that we are climbing uphill, literally on this property and in, before this board, to try and get this done, but we feel to try and get this done, but we feel very strongly, and I know that the landowner feels very strongly, that there is no reasonable economic use of this property as currently zoned, and we can't simply wish it here. If the county believes, and I guess for this landowner, that this is something that truly is developable, then let economic development bring them the people that would actually be able to come onto this property and afford to do all the land development work, which my client has indicated at this point is $10 million worth of land development work that would have to be able to go into this site in order to actually make it level enough to be able to develop. So with that, we respectfully request that this board recommend approval of the application as presented. If not, if you need further information, we certainly are willing to continue to work with staff and this board to bring before you whatever additional information you may want in order to help make an informed decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Battle. At this time, is there anyone here who wants to speak in favor of this request? Again, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this request? And I will ask one more time. Again, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this request? All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition of this request?
Ma'am, I'd like to speak.
Come up, Mr. Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. This is a very tenuous situation where this area is highly commercial. Given that these people have tried to sell the property in years' time, I can understand their frustration. But at this time, do y'all realize how many properties y'all have voted in, whether single-family homes, attached condominiums? This, do you have any idea of the numbers that have yet to be built that you've already zoned? Can anybody give me those answers to the numbers? No, you can't. Now, the next statement is that that road is six years behind in construction, that Mount Zion Boulevard. It was, it was three years getting started, and now it's another three years behind, and now it's six years behind. Your traffic problem is already tied am out in this county. With that being said, in the numbers of houses that you've already approved, apartments, and fee simple, and all that other stuff, do you realize how many more people and children are gonna be in this, in these areas?
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Your time is up at this time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All right.
There's, because it's a 10-minute timeframe, he could go, there's other folks who want to, to speak, but it's up to the chair if you.
If he wants, yeah.
If he wanted to finish his thought, he still has the 10 minutes, 10 minutes. It's just they have 10 minutes.
Yeah, there, also there, and we'll bring up other people, there are other people as well that want to speak.
I left off at the schools. And, and the schools that, let me give you for instance, over Mount Zion High School is now not in Mount Zion because you couldn't find enough room to build Mount Zion High School. And if the schools are overcrowded and we're already down in education here, and the, and the teacher-student volume of giving adequate education to the children, I'm not saying deny them totally, but it needs to be denied now till we give more thought to how we're building and what we're building. Now I'm done.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone here who wants, who wishes to speak in opposition to the request? She had her hand up first.
So I listened very intently to Ms. Battle, and this is the issue that we have in Clayton County now. These investors come here and they say it's cost-prohibitive. It's not cost-prohibitive, they just don't want to invest in Clayton County. If this was an area that they really wanted to invest in, they would pay the money to do it, and they would bring in the commercial businesses, the high-quality commercial businesses that we need. So as we talk about our deficit that we have right now, as we talk about bringing in high-quality businesses, this is the area for it. And Mr. Mickey asks, just asked, do we know how many? Well, in District 3, we have 2,200 simple-fee residents coming to our area based on the information they gave us last night. 2,200. And like he said, as a schoolteacher, I understand that the, the system needs to be able to educate those children that's coming into these areas. This is not high-quality. This is not going to bring Clayton County where we need it to be. And then investors want to come in and they want to talk about, they want to throw in the word affordable because we all need, we all know we need affordable housing, but you have come with no plan of what affordable means, what is gonna be the cost for the residents, how are we gonna get them in here? Stop throwing around these words and thinking that we don't understand, that you're just trying to build whatever you can build, make your profit, and leave our county, and we're in the same situation that we've always been in.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Mr. Anderson?
Henry Anderson, Unincorporated, Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. A Madam Chairwoman and the Board of Commissioners, Vice Chairwoman, I know this is in your district. This led to the email that I had did to all of y'all that the citizens don't know until I do public commenting on it, on, in, in the first Tuesday in, in March. I'd like to come with a position of strength on this. The board has approved your predecessors' apartment homes, townhomes, gas stations, but what I said in my email, not being adversarial, in terms of giving you a timeframe to do a presentation, a short five, 10-minute presentation during a business meeting, because the Department of Development, Mr. Patrick E.G.K.'s department, where all of the developers' gas stations have to go to register because they have to go through the director's department, I feel, and I stand by this, we have the information technology to where you can, as Mr. Tanya Jean Funny said, Mr. Mickey Garber has said, to put together how many townhomes, how many gas stations in each district, because I'm not gonna put anybody on the spot, but I would say, do all four of your district commissioners know how many has been approved? Clayton County is a good county, but yes, as Ms. Funny said, I just see townhomes being approved, high-density zoning apartment homes, and I feel that it's, it's just, just bad and, and too late, you know? But to be able to intelligently go on a position of strength, that's what I, I ask, and I'm against this, but to say to you all, to add to the email that all of you got on me that I hope you read, and I will be commenting on in March, please give us a presentation. You can do it in five to 10 minutes. We have the technology to have all of this, so you know, more townhomes and apartment homes is in Elena Reeves District, Commissioner, Vice Chairwoman District, Moore and Commissioner Hamburg District. You need to know, if you don't know, but we need to know so intelligently, because this emotions in this Clayton County, in my opinion, needs no more townhomes, no more apartment homes. And we can build raw S-180. So, I'm against this, so I hope you take it, but I will be doing public commenting on this the first Tuesday in March, because I gave a Citizens Command Directive, and I'm not being adversarial, because I feel they can be done, and I feel to educate all of us, to educate you all, we have the technology. The Department of Community Development can do this if you just give the directives and the orders, but I'm against this development. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Next, again, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition of this request? Come up, please.
Madam Clerk, Commissioners, David Hamburg, District 3. Shortly before, a couple months ago, when Mr. Craddock and Mr. Christmas were removed from the developmental board, our lawyer cited a resolution stating that there were no more apartment complexes to be built in Clayton County. Now, going back, we got into this situation back in '96 during the Olympics, and I refer back to the dangerous dwellings article that was published in the Journal Constitution, where at 297,000 people, we had 19 apartment complexes listed in the Journal Constitution as being dangerous dwellings, but at 900,000 people, Gwinnett County only had 14. This is something we need to think about. Affordable housing is such a variance that any lawyer could beat that affordability in court, because it's each one's opinion of what affordable is. Remember, the ordinance resolution has been passed, no more apartments to be built in Clayton County. Reason being, all that's doing is bringing in Section 8 housing, nothing against them, but when you bring in subsidized housing, you're not gonna get Clayton County out of a Tier 1 welfare. It's not gonna happen. The numbers speak for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The time is up. Will the applicant please come forth? How much time do you need for your rebuttal? 10 minutes?
She only had 15 seconds left.
15 seconds.
Seconds left, okay.
I have something to say, but I'll wait until the zoning regarding what transpires. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Reeves, it is now time for you to vote your pleasure and make your motion.
Add some questions for the developer. This has been a long conversation that we have been having.
It's been a very long conversation, Commissioner Reeves.
I do see the, not the property owner, the, for Kittle Properties.
Yes, the representative.
I see you all here, you know, I really appreciate the thoroughness and the application that you all have presented. I know we discussed senior housing for this particular parcel, but given how recent senior housing developments in Clayton County have seen their rent increases, increase, you know, just even within one to two years after being built, and I know we had a discussion of what would it look like to have family housing, but this is still an area that is, is heavily commercial, it is heavy traffic in the area, so I have to ask if the developer and the property owner, if you all would be interested in a different location.
Well, as, as you know, and I think, I'm glad you asked that question, because that is a question that Kittle has asked itself. We did look at some other locations, including one that you had suggested across from the senior complex off of Anvil Block. I think what people have to understand is that because of the project that we are proposing that is using low-income housing tax credits, it is a heavily regulated part of the industry in which the DCA, the Department of Community Affairs here in Georgia, has very strict guidelines. A lot of the apartment complexes that you all have now, that you all say are affordable, are affordable because they were market-rate apartments that have degenerated over the years, and so now their rents are lower. And when we are looking at our affordable projects, we have to go through a process that is a competitive process that also has points given for locations. So to find a location, the location has to meet certain criteria. This particular location meets the criteria and gives us the highest points in terms of what DCA is saying are things that they want you to be near. When we have looked at other sites within the county, we have not been able to locate, at least in the timeframe that we have, because we are trying to prepare for the next round, the next competitive round. A site like the one that you had proposed, it does not point out. In other words, the points are much lower for that versus this location, which means that if we put in that location, the likelihood of winning is very low because it's a competitive process. So trying to find a location in Clayton, they may be open to that with, you know, working with commissioners, because it may not be in your district, it may be in Commissioner Allen's district, or maybe in Commissioner Hamburg's, or maybe Commissioner Davis's district. I, I think what is, what is so interesting to me is that we are in an economy right now where affordability is important, and affordability is not simply Section 8 housing. I think I find that a bit offensive, that that is the only housing that we think that we're dealing with. Many of our children have had to live, including my own, and I pay her, pay him rather, he works for me, and still had to find something affordable because the price ranges for apartments now is not what it was when you're looking at market, new market-rate apartments. They are paying $1,800 to $2,000 a month in many of the apartment complexes that are being built today that are market-rate apartments. That is not affordable for people who are owning and coming out of college, making $45,000 to $50,000 a year. That is too much. They don't even qualify to get into those spaces. And so affordability is something that has to be looked at, but it's quality affordable. You shouldn't be able to tell the difference between an affordable housing community and a market-rate community, and that's what DCA does today. I know that's far off a bit of your question, but I think that there's an educational component here that we have to have when we're talking about affordable housing. So could we find another location that may be something that Kittle is open to, but for this particular piece of property, it scores extremely high from the perspective of DCA that's giving out the low-income housing tax credits?
All right. Did you notice that? That was the only question that I had.
All right, at this time, Commissioner Reeves, we're calling for the.
Did any of the other commissioners?
Do y'all have any questions? Any other commissioners?
Well, I would like to make a motion, I would like to make a motion to deny BOC-2408-0443.
Second.
All right. All in favor, is there any discussion at this time? Any more discussion? All right, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? And the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next, number 19. Pass it. It passes to deny it.
Oh, right.
It passes to deny it, ladies and gentlemen. Y'all, we, we, we good up here, we're good. It passes to, when you hear it passes, y'all, y'all got it? Okay.
Okay, I believe we're ready for the next case.
Thank you. Let's go.
We're ready. All right, so the next case is the companion case, which is the rezoning. I'll read the case for the record. That is BOC 24080444, rezoning application, and again, for the property located at 6857 Mount Zion Boulevard in Morrow, Georgia. Again, the applicant is Battle Law, PC, and they're requesting to rezone the property from its current zoning, general business, GB, to RM multifamily residential for apartment complexes. As mentioned before, in the location and request, that staff's recommendation, as the planning consultants are recommending, that this item would be for denial, and the zone advisory group. zone advisory group followed their recommendation for denial, with the reasoning being incompatibility of the comprehensive plan. The zone advisory group also stated some concerns regarding the general welfare and health for opportunities for people living there. I know initially, when the zone advisory group heard this request, it was for a different type of housing, but the recommendation was for denial based upon the staff's recommendation and their concern on the general welfare of the community that will be there, and the lack of amenities was also stated as well. That is the recommendation stated by staff and also by the zone advisory group, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have for staff.
All right. Any questions, board members, at this time? All right. Would the applicant please come forth? How much time, how much time did you want for your rebuttal?
None.
Zero, okay.
Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562, Havershamet, Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, In light of the fact that you have denied the land use, there's no question that you have no choice, quite honestly, but to deny the rezoning application. I won't take up a lot of time, but I think what is a challenging time for us right now is not only affordability, but housing choice. And as I go through many counties and cities throughout the metro Atlanta area doing land use and zoning work, it's very apparent to me that there is a disconnect in educational things that need to occur. We have to house everybody. It is not simply those who can afford a house. It's not simply those who can afford a $350,000 starter home, when many of us got started with a home, when I moved to Atlanta, that only cost $103,000. Our children can't afford to buy homes because they're, many of them can't afford to buy homes and find homes that they can afford to buy, because most of the communities that we go into want three-sided, four-sided brick, the houses have to be, you know, 2,000, 2,500 square feet in size. People don't want townhomes, but even a townhome used to be about $150,000 to $180,000. Most townhomes are starting at $300,000. So our kids can't afford, and our grandchildren can't afford to buy homes, so where do they live? They live with us because they can't afford the rent and they can't afford to buy a home. So when we're talking about affordability, everybody should live in an affordable home because you're not supposed to live in anything that costs more than 33% of, or 30 to 33% of your income. So don't say that you don't like affordability because everybody here should be living in something affordable. So the question is, how do we level the playing field? And we do that by programs such as the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program that allows for us to build in a manner that reduces the overall cost. That's what the tax credit component does. It gives grant money, in a sense, to builders, provided that the builders provide quality housing that has to meet certain criteria over a certain period of time. And that is what allows them to drop the amount of money that the people have to spend for their rent, to make it affordable for them to be able to stay there. And that is dependent upon what the market rates are within that community. So if you move into a community, for example, places like Roswell, that say, you need to aspire to be in Roswell, we don't care if the people who work here can't live here. I find that offensive. So what I hope Clayton County, as this new administration comes in, is that you all look across the board at housing, everybody that wants to live in Clayton County as hard-working individuals who come into this space because they love this county and they want to be here. When I first moved to Atlanta, I lived off of Terra Boulevard. I moved to Clayton County. So it's not that I haven't lived here and haven't experienced the wonderful people that live within this community, but what I'm asking is that we look at ways to provide housing and not demonize people who choose to live in a manner that is not similar to the way that we choose to live. There's not probably one of us in here who hasn't lived in an apartment complex at some point in time in your life. There's not one of us that hasn't lived in this community that hasn't either aspired to have a house or have a house and are happy that we got it at a price that might have been 103 when we bought it, but is appreciated to value of over $300,000. So we now have equity in our homes, but it's difficult for our children and others to come into this space and be able to do the same things that we were able to do as we came up over the years. I'm 60 years old. I know what it means to own your own home, and I also know what it means to buy a home right now in this market, as I bought a home last year. So I ask that we figure out ways to provide affordability, provide attainability, I don't even like to call it affordability, attainability, for everybody to have a clean, safe environment to live in and not demonize those who cannot afford to buy a home or who make a choice not to buy a home, because everybody doesn't want the responsibility. And let's be honest, you know some people who don't need to own their own home. Because there are some folks who live next door to you right now that don't take care of the home that they have, and that brings your property values down more than apartment complex that is supported by low-income housing tax credits that looks good and provides quality housing for people. So I know this is getting denied, but this was my moment and I decided to take it, and I appreciate you all listening.
Thank you.
And I know it's off point, but hey, I'm not even going to use the other four minutes and 51 seconds that I have, but thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone here who wants to speak in favor of this request?
Hi, Brenda Hadad, Joplin, Missouri. I've worked for Kittle Property Group, and I know this is a lost cause, but I did want to just point out a few things because, you know, I've been working in Clayton County now for the last year, and I feel like it's really important, as Michelle pointed out, to kind of educate people a little bit. Somebody said earlier that if they really wanted to, they would invest, they would come and they would put up a shopping center. No, it's not like that, I promise you. If businesses feel like they can make money, they will come, and you can't take a piece of land that only has nine usable acres and expect somebody to pour $10 million worth of site work into it and make money. They can't do it. The other thing you need is you need rooftops if you want to draw commercial ventures to your county and to your area. You've got to have rooftops. As for affordability, I wanted to point out a couple of things. One is, there's this, in our industry, there's a saying called NIMBYism, not in my backyard, and I've seen it in a lot of places that are not very nice people, but I'm astounded to see it here. This is essentially, we don't want people living in affordable, we don't want people living who just can only afford apartment, or we don't want people who can only afford a townhouse. That is astounding to me. As far as rents go, I will, just to let you all know, affordable rents are set by HUD. So what our development proposed was to target those at 60% of the area median income, which means that there is a limit for everybody that would live in there, that could apply for our development. So there's a, there's not a lower limit, that's for things like Section 8, which there is definitely a need for, or even 9% tax credits. What we were looking at doing was a 4% bond, which is essentially marketing to the workforce. So when people say, we don't know what affordable is, there's no plan, there's a very, very strict plan out there, and it's administered by HUD. Now, that doesn't mean that everything that HUD touches is a Section 8 property. This is not, this would not be that. So I know moving forward, I know this is going to be a denial, but, you know, if people have questions, just ask. You can, you know, I've put my name and number out all over there, and then I see people come up tonight and just talk about things that they're not, they really don't know what they're talking about, and we'd be happy to answer. And we'll be moving on, and it's a shame, because we were looking at investing about $50 million in this area, and I'm really sorry that we won't be able to move forward with that. But thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Madam Chair, there's about a minute forty left on the clock.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Shannon Dixon, Clayton County. I have to say, I'm glad to be a Republican on tonight. Because one thing I know about Clayton County, I've been selling real estate in Clayton County for 30 years, and the joke is on us because we always bring people to Clayton County for affordable housing. I put someone in my car wanting to buy a house, they don't have a whole lot of money, guess what we bring them? Clayton County. Because their dollars can't afford to take them anywhere else. You can't go to DeKalb, you can't go to Fulton, you can't go to Atlanta. So they already think we're affordable. They already think that we're the lower of the low. That's what happens when you sell real estate. They bring you to Clayton County. And I understand we'd rather have liquor stores in every county, that's sad. You got liquor stores a mile from each other, so we gonna get drunk now? We'd rather drink than have a place to live? You know, we'd rather go get our nails done than have a place to live? I mean, there's just some things that we bring in this county that really does not make sense for us as homeowners. I've been a homeowner for 30 years, as homeowners. I think we need to reconsider some things.
Ma'am, thank you so much.
Thank you, my time is up. Thank you, and I'm okay with that.
Mr. Reeves, at this time, is there, go to opposite, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to this request?
And then that will be, the clock should start at 10 minutes.
All right, good. You said 10 minutes, because I'm going to take my time with this, since I don't have, and it's going to be judicious. I am very proud, I have not spoken during these zoning hearings, because it's very important to me, and I hope you really hear about the email that I did about giving statistics in a business presentation so we can be educated, because I know that we have too many apartment homes, too many townhomes, too many gas stations, to know how it is segmented per district. But I'm going to say I'm very, very proud, and I'm going to give you, I have not told you about my evaluation scale, but it is a 10. I'm very proud of you, Vice Chairwoman, Commissioner of District 1, Ms. Elena Reeves, as well as you, Madam Chairwoman, Mrs. Dr. Lea Anderson Henry, my Commissioner of District 3, Mrs. Tasha Allen, Commissioner Gail Hamburg, and Commissioner Demont Davis of District 4, Ms. Gail Hamburg of District 2, for denying this. I heard, and I don't like to speak difference of opinion, but I am, I heard a turn in battle. This is why Clayton County is in the shape that it is in, because we have too many, we are severely out of balance. We have so much affordable housing. So if you deny everything, it's still more than enough apartment homes, townhomes in this county for, they just want to dump on our county. I will say this, I don't like talking about a city, I said this yesterday, the city of Lovejoy was the last bastion of nice, affordable property. All their mayor, you don't control, the city of Lovejoy, has done is just do townhomes. When I go down Jonesboro Road to get on 75, townhomes, but not only are they town, crick cutter, dull, bland, drab, and even the retention pond is ghetto, trashy. That's all they do in Clayton County. Commissioner Tasha Allen on Walden Park, the first thing you saw that's coming up are townhomes, it's a multi-use development, but that's all you see, those are townhomes they put up first. People dump on this county, we are so out of balance. So don't let that stuff, you have done right, and I'm so proud of you. I hope you do more. We are out of balance. We are out of balance. That's why when, and Demont Davis sits, our Commissioner Demont Davis is a member of ACOG, when they give statistics, and I've been working to give statistics, but Commissioner Davis, you have the statistics, when they do the income disparity, when they do medium home disparities, there's not like a $30,000 difference between us and the next county, it's $100,000 and $100,000. That's because all we do, cities included, Jonesboro, Riverdale, Lovejoy, apartment homes, townhomes, they tell you all of this stuff, and it lowers our, you know, the median, that's why we're so out of balance. So I really hope that you will honor my request. I don't like doing a citizens' command directive, and I'm going to tell you why I'm doing it. Well, I will say, because in the organizational chart, which I'll show, which you see, you have the Clayton County citizens above you all. So I say that respectfully, not adversarial, but I do say a command order directive, where I'm speaking is I'm your superiors. Technically, I'm not, but I'm speaking. Madam Chairwoman, I hope you will give the directive to have the Community Development Department put together all of the apartment, all of the townhomes, all of the gas stations per district, because I know it can be done, we have the information technology. I will not accept we can't, because all of them go through the Community Development Department, they want to put all of this stuff, so we can be educated, because we go a lot on emotion, but we know it's true, so you all can be educated. But we don't need to prove no more, not at this time, more tournaments what's needed, because we are out of balance. Thank you again for the time, thank you again for being courageous and doing the right thing. I am so proud, hopefully there'll be more of this, and don't let any more apartment homes, townhomes, gas stations, no matter how much they say they dress it up, tire stores, beauty supply stores, thank you.
Please hold your voices in the background.
Thank you, so we can get more quality development, because we have so much of it now, so we have too much of it, we are out of balance. Thank you again for being courageous. Outstanding, evaluation 10 plus.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition?
She got somebody over there.
Okay.
Because she spoke about me. Otanya Jean Funny, I would like Ms. Battle to invite me the next time she does that passionate speech she just did in Cobb, Gwinnett, or Fayette County. Like Dr. Anderson said, we have taken everything, we have taken everybody, and we see where it has gotten us to this point. We've got to do other things in Clayton County, we need to focus on other things in Clayton County, along with housing, but we got to focus on other things. We find now, because of the House bill, that housing alone is not going to support our county. So that's what we're facing now. So when we had the meeting, and they were saying that in other counties, property taxes is only 40% of their county's income, whereas in Clayton County it's 60. So when we ask for commercial, high-quality commercial to come in, it's to support our whole county. Not that we're trying to say, no, you can't afford to be here, things like that, we have to have a bigger picture. So we're, so I take offense to people saying that we're trying to demonize people from coming here, that is not true. But we have got to focus on what we need to do for our county, or we're going to go underwater. So let them bring something else here, and I think, Commissioner Reeves, you offered something different, and they came up with a whole bunches of excuses why it couldn't be done. So we didn't say, don't bring the project here, we offered another location. And frankly, I don't think this is a good place for this location, it is right by an interstate, which is not a good location for affordable housing. So there were a lot of things with this project, but I don't want her to come here and try to demonize us because we're trying to dig ourselves out of a hole for our county, and we shouldn't, like Dr. Anderson said, we don't let them allow us to do that.
Is there anyone else in opposition? Come on up, please.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Horton, I live in Hampton. When it comes down to it, are we going to get a Statue of Liberty here? Because we are taking your old and tired, is that, your sick and your tired. I understand what she's saying, everybody needs affordable housing, but that's not a Clayton County issue, that's a United States issue, and I don't think we should be the place that has to fix that problem. We have more housing here than we could possibly stand. Every time you turn around, they're cutting down more and more land. What we also know is that even though you say you're going to have affordable housing, you're getting tax credits from the government, from this, which means technically, let's say if you build 250 units, only 20% of your units really have to be affordable. The rest of them, you can make full market on those houses. So I understand promises, but promises are just that. That's promises. At the end of the day also, it's an apartment complex. With an apartment complex, these are people who can be transient, which means you can move in and out, and in and out, and what you are not responsible for is the taxes. If you are not... If you are not a homeowner in a community, then the homeowners are responsible for the taxes. So no, we are not trying to demonize people, because clearly Clayton County is the place, by your own statement, that people come when they need affordable housing. But at this point, what we need is affordable grocery stores. We need, when you have places where you're bringing more children, what are the children doing? 'Cause I'm not seeing a whole lot of, let's make all these plans so the kids have something to do, because you do need that.
Ma'am, Director, Director, no. Director Commissary to the board, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
So in terms of somewhere, and like, and just like Ms. Funny said, it's a million other counties. Why not take it to a county where they also, 'cause it's things that we don't have here, that we're fighting for. Take it to some of the counties that have things, and build something there. I don't, I don't hear that fight there. So at the end of the day, I pray that these people have as much affordable housing as they possibly can have, but right now, apartments is not what we need here. We need to take care of home first before we can offer our handout. Put your mask on your face first.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition of this request? Again, anyone else who wants to speak in opposition? Ms. Battle, did you wanna do your, does she, she didn't have any, she said zero time for rebuttal. Okay, thank you. So this public hearing is closed. Commissioner Reeves, at this time, what would you like to do?
Can I make a statement before I?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I, I, I hear, I hear everybody's frustration about how many apartments and, you know, how much housing is in Clayton County, and we have some townhouses that are for rent, some townhouses that are for purchase, and I do wanna commend, you know, Kittle Properties for, you know, the thoroughness in which, you know, we have, we have been talking about this particular property for months. I know this is a just, Community Development can talk about it, too, this is just, it's just a terrible piece of land, and I know that y'all have been very intentional about what it would look like to have housing there, however, it's just, it's not the right location. So I, I make a motion to deny the companion bill for BOC twenty-four oh eight dash zero four four four.
I'll second, okay. I'll second that motion. All right, at this time, we call for the vote, all in, oh, any discussion? All right, I call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the, the, it is denied. All right, it is denied.
All right, we're gonna move to the last zoning petition, and that'll be item number twenty. So that'll be for the case number BOC two-four-one-zero-zero-four-five-three. This is a request by Brightson Planning and Design for a conditional use permit for an ADU, which is an accessory dwelling unit for the property located at fifteen-eleven East Fayetteville Road in Riverdale, Georgia, which is currently zoned RS one-eighty. The property is right exactly at one acre of land, and this property is within Commissioner District Two. Staff reviewed over the request, and acknowledged that the subject property currently has an existing structure on the site. The primary home was built in nineteen fifty-seven, according to records. The applicant is requesting to use the secondary structure that's located in the rear of the property to use it as an accessory dwelling unit, which is approximately seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight total square feet. The RS one-eighty zoning district requirements states that any accessory dwelling unit will require a conditional use permit, first and foremost, but secondly, there are minimal living size requirements for any accessory dwelling unit, which is a minimum of eight-hundred square feet. With the information stated, staff did review over the requests. Staff also looked at the property and drove down the street on East Fayetteville Road to see that there are some existing structures, or accessory dwellings, or sheds that are in the area. Staff's recommendation for this petition is approval with one condition, and I'll read that condition for the record. The subject structure does not comply with the accessory dwelling unit requirements and the RS one-eighty standards. The applicant is seeking variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals to remedy the non-compliance. The Board of Commissioners' approval is only for the use of an accessory dwelling. That is the end of the recommended conditions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have for staff.
Board members, are there any questions at this time?
Can you repeat the condition?
Yes, the subject structure does not comply with the accessory dwelling requirements and the RS one-eighty standards. The applicant is seeking variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals to remedy the non-compliance, the Board of Commissioners' approval is only on the use of an accessory dwelling. So stating that this request also has a Board of Zoning Appeals petition that will go before them, there are development standards that they do not meet, which that board is the only body that can grant them permission to do that. So this is for the use of the property in the request of, of the subject property.
Can you, can you clarify what the BZA will be voting on?
Absolutely, Commissioner, I can. The Board of Zoning Appeals will hear two separate requests for the same property. Again, stating that the subject property is one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifteen total square feet for the primary size of the home. The accessory structure is at seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight total square feet. In our ordinance, that's in Section Three, Article Three, Section Three of the Clayton County Zoning Ordinance, states that, again, the conditional use is required for any accessory dwelling unit, but it specifically has a section that talks about, there's a minimum of fifty percent cap for any accessory dwellings in terms of the total square footage that can be, it can have. So in short, half of the size of the primary home, they will be exceeding sixty-eight percent. The only way that we can comply with that is if the Board of Zoning Appeals would approve that structure. So again, we have the minimum lot, excuse me, the minimum size requirements for accessory dwelling, which is eight-hundred feet, they do not meet that, they're at seven, seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight. And then we have the total of the half the size of the primary structure cannot exceed fifty percent, they're at sixty-eight. So that's what the Board of Zoning Appeals will hear when it comes before them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time?
The applicant is here.
Is he here?
Yes.
Okay, where is it? Come on up.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good evening. This case is for decision only.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
I would like to make one comment.
You can come up, that's fine.
Every, I, I, I think we, we presented in, in December, and it is, this is for a decision. I do wanna point out one thing that seems to keep not being mentioned, the tax assessor records show that the accessory structure, both structures, were actually built in nineteen fifty-seven. So this is not a, a situation where one structure just popped up out of nowhere, and, and now they're trying to make it one thing or another. The tax records, the tax assessor records clearly show there were two structures built in nineteen fifty-seven, one at seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight square feet, and one at the twelve, fifteen square feet. So we are going through this, it is, what we're trying to do is just interior renovation, no exterior changes or modifications, so, thank you.
Commissioner Hambrick, what is your pleasure at this time?
Uh, yes, after speaking with the owners and all, I recommend approval for BOC dash two-four-one-zero-dash-zero-four-five-three for a conditional use permit with the one condition.
All right, I second that. Is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you so much. This concludes our zoning part of the agenda. Chuck, at this time, do we need a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, please, on real estate and litigation.
I knew it. All right, I, I need a motion at this time to go into executive session for, you said litigation and what else?
Real estate.
And real estate.
So moved.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you. Oh, Lord Jesus. Y'all ready? We are back from executive session, and Chuck, take us home, please.
Motion to, motion to reconvene.
I need a motion to reconvene.
So moved.
All right, second, all, all in favors, in discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes.
Actually, I realize I have to take three of them together, and the other one I'll take separate.
Okay.
So the first is a settlement in the matter of Katie Martinez against Cheyenne Reynolds' Board and County Police Department, related, about, rising out of a traffic incident that occurred on October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, at the intersection of Terra Boulevard and Upper Riverdale Road, and that is in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars. The second is Kania Martinez, and against Cheyenne Reynolds', Board of Commissioners, Clayton County Police Department, relating to a traffic incident that occurred on October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, at the intersection of Terra Boulevard and Upper Riverdale Road, and that is in the amount of thirty-one thousand dollars. And the last is Monica Perez, as legal guardian of Hector Matut, against Cheyenne Reynolds' Board of Commissioners, Clayton County, the Police Department, relating to an accident that occurred on October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, at the intersection of Terra Boulevard and Upper Riverdale Road, and that is in the amount of ten thousand dollars, and asks that the chief financial officer has approved to, authorized chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect the appropriate revenue source and expense.
I know, I know. It's been all day.
Like, what am I saying?
Board members, I open this floor, the floor, it's time for a motion. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, second?
Second.
In discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next?
All right, the, the next is a settlement agreement between Kevin Clarrett, on one hand, and Devin Dunbar, Board of Commissioners, Clayton County, and the Sheriff's Office, relating to an accident that occurred on October twenty-seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, and that is in the amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars, and authorized the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense as required.
All right, I need a motion at this time.
So moved.
All right. All right, in discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion?
Abstaining.
Any abstentions? All right, and we have one abstention. Commissioner Allen, can you please state for the record why you are abstaining?
Abstaining? Sheriff's spouse, so, so what would that, okay, I guess, will it be, will it be?
Conflict of interest?
Yeah, conflict.
Okay, conflict of interest, thank you.
All right, and again, the motion passes, we have three yes, one abstention, and zero nays. Thank you. Or five, I'm gonna say four, I'm sorry. Girl, you know who counts. It's late at night, y'all, four ayes, one abstention, and zero nays, all right.
And that's all I have.
All right, all right. Good board meeting, guys, and at this time, I need a motion to go home, y'all.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, all in, in discussion before we go home? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful evening.